...about your workshop agenda. It's Tuesday, October 12th, and it is 2:00. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Adams-Zack to do the invocation and Commissioner Turner to lead us in the pledge. Please rise if you're able to do so.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us this day. Bring us this beautiful community in which we live and which we thrive and let us do everything we can to make it better and to meet the needs of the communities, to make all of our decisions in your mind and your light. And just let us be one good community, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams-Zack. Commissioner Turner, appreciate that. Is there any public comment on agenda items that we have right now? And any comments on agenda items? Okay, we'll move right on. We don't, we're not gonna recess for the Port Authority. That's a 205, so we're gonna go straight into the B O C C workshop. Item A, administration, donation of property for Parks and Recreation use. Julianne, do you have that one?
Yes, sir. We were contacted by a citizens group who has made the offer to donate a parcel of land located in East Palatka directly across from the post office there off of Old Putnam County Boulevard. And they have two, the donation is just for free, however, they have two contingencies. One, that it be retained for a public purpose or a public gathering place. And two, that some signage be erected in memory of Jerry Beedenball. And so I do have some members of that group here with me, and I know that they would like to also speak with you. We did, Parks and Rec staff did review the parcel. We do believe that it is a good location for a future use for a playground. There is not a playground facility south of the bridge, the Memorial Bridge, until you get down to Georgetown. So we believe that would be a very good location to have a playground. We also brought it to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, who voted unanimously in agreement that they believe this is a good opportunity for the county. So that, with that, I'll answer questions and/or let Judge Hedstrom and his group speak with us.
All right, first of all, I'm gonna let the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Bill Pickens, speak first.
Okay, thanks Chairman Harvey. Yes, it was brought to us at our last meeting at the beginning of the month, and we were in 100% agreement to go ahead and accept this gift and just kinda put it in for future development, possibility to maybe apply for a FERDAP grant for playground equipment. So it'd be a good fit in that area. There is a ball field just down the road, but it's really not a park. It's got a basketball court, I believe, and a softball field or baseball field. So we were in unanimous agreement to make the recommendation to the board to accept this gift.
Good deal. Thank you. All right, your group's up, Your Honor?
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have, after that, I don't really have a lot to say. Thank you. I do wanna point out that Commissioner Turner played on that ball field years ago, although that was many years after I played on it. So it sort of adhered to both of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Turner, this is in your district, so...
Yes, sir. I had brought it to the board before and expressed how grateful I was to the group for offering this piece of property to the county. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the offer in this piece of property into the park system.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Have a great day. All right, we still are...
Too early for me to start asking for money to put up a playground there?
Yeah, it's a little bit.
We'll apply for a FERDAP grant.
Commissioner Turner, was that a way? All right, we're gonna go Human Resources, Employee of the Month, Policy Update. We'll just move right on down the line.
I actually read this, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready to make a motion to accept if, unless, I don't wanna steal Sarah's thunder, but if everybody's read it, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the changes.
Yeah, I just, I updated it with the changes that you guys wanted.
To approve the changes by Commissioner Turner's been entered. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams-Zack. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna recess our, we're gonna recess our commission workshop and go to Port Authority workshop. Is there any public comment on Port Authority workshop? Hearing none, we'll go to general discussion. Is there any general discussion amongst the commissioners? Hearing none, we're gonna join the, adjourn the Port Authority workshop and go back to our regular workshop. Next item is Item C, Liberty Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the change in hours.
All right, proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on changing the hours? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Next item, procurement, RFP for communication system upgrade for public safety.
Oh, you want me to do you too, huh? No, you're gonna have to present this one.
Come on, let's go.
Chairman, we are typically in a procurement, well, typically our process would be budget is in line, and then we just do procurement on our own and then bring you back the rank order. The communication system is something we've talked about at great lengths for a number of years now, since I joined the county, frankly. And so I, this is not new to you all for sure, however, we are asking in advance of having a line item budget dedicated to it, that you allow us to go ahead and prepare the RFP and solicit for what we believe the proposed solution will be to upgrading our infrastructure and modernizing that communication system. And then after we get to the bottom line and a rank order recommendation by the evaluation committee, we can then identify proper budgeting at that time.
Okay, so this would be a complete overhaul of our radio systems, towers, and everything, a study at one big time to look at it? Is that what we're talking about?
It would be. It would be the conversion to the P-25 system, and I know that there are many people in the room, much more intelligent on this particular matter, that can assist JR, Chad, Alicia, Joe, Gator. But yes, it would be an overhaul of the entire system.
One that was not smart enough not to stand up, but...
Okay, hang on a minute.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, so I need, before we get started, we all know that we need it, JR. If that's what you're fixing to do is try to, it was needed before you got here, before I was a commissioner. It's been needed for years. So, you know, this is time we need to go on and figure out a way to bite this apple. I mean, it really is. But my question to you is, what are you actually asking us for today, Julie? Are you asking us to go ahead with a RFP? And so we're gonna know how much this is gonna cost when we're done, so they'll come in and say, for X amount of dollars, we can fix this, and for, it won't be like a qualifications thing for somebody to design a system. We're actually gonna find somebody that will propose for X amount of dollars, we'll fix this problem you have.
That's correct. What we're proposing is to do a solutions-based RFP with an evaluation committee of, you know, a multitude of people, end-users of the system, as well as those who work on it, so that we can bring back to the board exactly what we are asking for you to implement in Putnam County with a dollar amount associated to it. We'd like to do the RFP, brand-new, i.e., instead of piggybacking or using a state-term contract, so that we don't eliminate a funding source. So if we, if we piggyback something, ARPA may not be eligible, or a different funding source of federal nature may not be eligible. But if we do it in-house, it would be customized to us. We would have all the federal terms and conditions in there. Doesn't obligate us to use federal dollars, but it essentially makes sure that we don't limit our potential sources of funding for it.
So what you're asking today doesn't even make, say that we have to move forward. It's just authorizing you to go out and see what, what it would cost to, to fix this problem that we've had for years?
Correct. We're gonna put a formal RFP on the street, so obviously you'd be involved or you'd have knowledge of it. We're also gonna convene an evaluation committee. The same, same process would be in place. We would ask the commission and the evaluation committee not to have private conversations with any of the vendors that are gonna participate. So we're asking to engage in that formal process, which is step one of how we get to the solution.
Well, knowing that for the last four years at least, we've exhausted every funding source that we could think of, from the federal, getting Yoho involved back before CAT was there, and all the way down to the state and everything else in between, I don't, I don't, this is something we're gonna have to deal with somehow locally. And I think we've put our firefighters and our deputies in jeopardy long enough, so this commissioner's ready to move forward. I mean, you can talk to me again about it, JR, but all you're gonna do is say the same thing they've said the last four years. If you don't do it before long, we're gonna kill somebody.
I have a question along those lines, and I appreciate you standing there, but I've heard it and I wanna solve the problem. But Julianne, my understanding is, is that other counties around us have went to a certain system that, and I don't recall which one, and maybe that's a good thing that I don't write now.
Yep.
But it would seem like we would need to be synergy with them, if you will. Is that, wouldn't that be something that we could say in our RFP that, you know, we really wanna, we wanna be able to communicate in Putnam, but we also need to communicate with our surrounding counties?
I think. Are, are we still planning on trying to be actually part of St. John's system? That they're gonna share towers or use towers?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. If we're gonna use federal dollars, we need to go through a formal procurement process that would not limit our end result. When we solicit, when we put our RFP on the street, we're gonna ask for a solutions base. One evaluation criteria must be, based on what I've heard from both the SO and fire rescue, its ability to have interoperability with our surrounding counties for which we engage in mutual aid. So we will evaluate the proposers, anyone who comes to the table, based on the metrics identified by those end-users and the users of the system, as to what they tell me they need in a successful communication system. And whomever can bring the best solution to the table will then be our recommended rank order.
Okay, good. All right, good, thank you. Chairman, entertain a motion.
I move that we move Item D forward for the procurement RFP for the communication system.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion?
Under discussion.
Under discussion, Mr. Rawls?
Is the RFP gonna say that we're gonna, that we're attempting to use ARPA money, or is it just gonna leave that out?
We shouldn't identify a funding source for the RFP at all?
Okay.
Doesn't matter. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Next item up is our Public Works Letter of Support for St. John's Avenue Drainage Project Scope and Span, Expansion.
I'm ready to move this one forward, too. There's no money in it for, I mean, no money, it's not gonna cost us anything. We're just asking for a letter of support for the extra funds if they're available, correct?
Correct.
Move approval.
Thank you. We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Adams-Zack. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.
Let me ask a question quick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rawls.
What is the, we've, we've done this several times, the same project. Do we just keep finding money every time we turn around? Okay.
DEO, if I may. DEO came in and gave us so much money, I think it was DEO, and then we get, they find additional money, and we can apply for it, so they let it, let us add it to the same project. Well, it's the same things happened. I understand this money was actually left over from another county or something. I guess you're gonna have to come up and talk after all, Mike. I know you're prepared.
No, I just...
But the money became available.
We've discussed this several times. The last time we said that we're gonna move closer to the college and keep heading that direction. We're just, we just keep moving on and on.
As we get more money.
Yeah.
Correct. This is very tricky. The DEO process is lengthy and time-consuming, and some of the other counties don't wanna go through that process, so they're just not using the money. And so since they don't use the money, we've already got all of our environmental done for the whole project, so this is, they just keep giving us money so that we can press forward with it.
Cool. Good, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, yes, what do those initials mean? Northeast Florida Regional Council, which I am the president, and thank you. COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan, presented by Sean Lahey. I do wanna thank Commissioner Rawls for serving on this committee with the Regional Council and the hard work that the committee did and is doing. So, Lahey, you got the floor, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. And I believe Ms. Young is about to pull up a presentation, but if you can't pull it up, there's no worries. You know, we can just have a discussion here.
Have it in our book.
So the focus of my discuss, are you able to pull it up?
Yes.
Okay, no problem, and we can get started. The focus of my discussion today or item is on the Northeast Florida COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan. So back in May 2021, during a commission meeting, I briefly addressed you on different components of the plan. But with the amount of time that has passed since then, there are additional considerations and opportunities that we would like to emphasize to you as you continue these ARPA discussions. So give me one second just to pull up the presentation, and then we'll get started.
The rate we're going, we could've had you outta here really quick, you know?
There's no motion required. And so while the presentation's getting loaded up, you know, I'll just start off on an introductory note for everyone in the room. So the Northeast Florida Regional Council is one of 10 regional planning councils in the state of Florida. Commissioner Harvey currently serves as the President of the Board of Directors for the Regional Council.
We won't hold out against you.
And Commissioner Rawls has also served as a member of the Board of Directors, and we are very grateful for both of your service and dedication to the board. And so going back all the way to August 2020, the Regional Council received a federal award through the CARES Act, and this was awarded by the Economic Development Administration. And utilizing this money, the Regional Council established the Northeast Florida Economic Resilience Task Force, a policy body of 20 leaders from across Northeast Florida. And so Commissioner Rawls was one of two, oh. Yeah, no problem. Commissioner Rawls was one of two elected officials who served on the task force. Everyone else represented different interests, ranging from local government, private sector, to nonprofit. And so over the course of a year, we facilitated more than 12 meetings and identified policy recommendations that could assist local governments across Northeast Florida in the economic recovery journey that lies ahead. When the recovery plan was published in May 2021... And sorry for, there's really no worries.
That's okay.
So when the recovery plan was published in May 2021, ARPA funding announcements from the federal government also came out. And so the recovery plan and the ARPA guidelines really lined up nicely. The priorities that were identified by the task force were also the priorities of the federal government. And so since that timeframe, we've been communicating the recovery plan to elected officials and local governments all across Northeast Florida. And so once I pull this up, you know, I'm gonna share a few insights from this process and also share, you know, what other local governments have been considering. Maybe that can be considered as you begin to shape your process as well.
Okay.
Technology makes all of our lives more difficult.
It was supposed to be easier, remember?
Yes.
But it...
They announced us today.
We, we have the presentation in our book, if you, if you wanna just kinda...
Yeah, that's fine. I really, we don't need to put it on the screen. There's no worries. If that's okay with you? Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Don't fight with it.
We'll, we'll keep this informal today, and I think that might even lead to a better discussion.
Good deal.
So within the recovery plan, as I mentioned to you several months ago, there was three identified priority areas. The first one was infrastructure, which is obviously a huge priority for local governments across the region. The second one was relief and support for small businesses. And the third one was equity, looking at affordable housing, mental health issues. One of the biggest priorities identified throughout this process was broadband, you know, expanding broadband access, affordable, high-speed broadband access. And so through the Regional Council, we're, you know, in the process of forming new policy initiatives to start looking at those issues. And so relating this to the American Rescue Plan Act, you all received a pretty hefty size of money. Northeast Florida as a whole, seven counties, 25 municipalities, received over $500 million in federal assistance. So that's direct local government allocations. Even really small towns like Hilliard, Baldwin, et cetera, received, you know, upwards of $1.7 million in some cases. So this is a really interesting opportunity for the entire country, but especially here in Northeast Florida, with how many concerns are on the table. And so in the presentations that I've given across the region, some of the most important priorities that elected officials have expressed an interest in is affordable housing, expanding broadband access. That's, that's been an observation that everyone has mentioned. And then more traditional issues and concerns related to water and sewer infrastructure. And so I've been following some of your discussions here at the local level in Putnam County, and obviously all of those issues have kind of been brought up, but it seemed like broadband, water and sewer infrastructure, and some other components like mental health resources have really been, you know, coming to the forefront of discussions. So some considerations from across Northeast Florida. Nassau County developed a prosperity plan to guide how they're spending this money. And this is a really interesting, you know, model example to consider. The way they're explaining it, the CARES Act is really focused on economic stabilization in real-time. It was emergency assistance. American Rescue Plan Act, on the other hand, can be utilized to build multi-generational long-term investments. And so there's really different focuses within both of these funding sources. And so while CARES Act helps people directly, this might be an opportunity to address infrastructure needs, et cetera. Now, a few other things to consider. Obviously, the infrastructure package in Congress is facing some hurdles right now, but if that moves through, you know, this month or next month, there might be additional opportunities beyond ARPA to address some of those, you know, underlying concerns. So that's really what's happening, you know, across Northeast Florida. More than interested to hear what you all are discussing and how the Regional Council can assist you all. And finally, the Economic Development Administration within the U.S. Department of Commerce recently announced $3 billion in additional funding opportunities. So if you have local partners interested in projects related to tourism, economic development, all sorts of things, even outdoor recreation, there's money on the table, and the Regional Council has staff resources that can assist you in navigating those grants. So more than happy to answer any questions, and if you have any discussion items that you'd like to, you know, bring up, we can do that as well.
Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
You know, I know you're leaving next week.
Sad.
And, you know, the other day, it was, yeah, it was, it's kinda bittersweet, though. You know, you don't, I would hope you wouldn't expect to stick around there forever, but you've done a great job. And I'd ask you the other day, you know, if we're still gonna have an opportunity to do a, a plan like Flagwood County did for their preparedness, and you said yes, so hopefully the person that picks the ball up and runs with it will get started on that pretty soon. Regarding the ARPA, I'm, you know, I'm, I wanna see as much of it go to the citizens as possible. I want us to spend as little bit on ourselves as possible and get it out in the community because there's, you know, a tremendous amount of need now, and there will be a lot more need as we keep going through this disastrous economy. But what do you, what do you see? What, you said Nassau County was the one that had the, what was the term used?
So Nassau County developed a prosperity plan.
What, what percentage of their money stays in the community, directly to the community?
So I, I would have to look at that, but I think a lot of the focus is maintaining investments in the local community, but there's questions of whether, you know, that money's going to outside contractors or the contractors are at the local level. So there's a lot of, you know, things that would have to be looked at. But we can forward that document to you all, and we'll, we'll do some analysis as well.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner, any other questions?
I have a quick one.
Yes, Mr. Turner?
So basically what the other communities are in the, what the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council has been talking about is basically trying to take the ARPA money and use it more for a multi-generational investment in the community and whatever, more so than like the CARES Act where you distributed it straight to people. Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
I would say that that's part of the focus. So the Regional Council, everything that we've been doing on COVID-19 is purely, you know, advisory, so we're just coming up with ideas. So the local level, these are where the decisions have to be made. But what we're seeing across the region is that local governments have an interest in building those types of long-term investments. And a lot of local governments aren't providing any, you know, direct business assistance or anything. They're focusing strictly on infrastructure. Personally, I think there's a balance to this discussion, but that's just an observation that we, we've noted across the region.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Sean, thank you again for coming. We appreciate it. Good luck in the future.
Thank you.
I've always enjoyed working with you. You're a highly intelligent young man. Your future is very bright.
I appreciate it. And have a good day, and this is not the last...
Now he's gonna wear a hard hat.
This is not the last time I'll be in Palatka. I'll be back soon.
We look forward to it.
I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Addendum 1, Board of County Commission Redistricting Map Revision. Who is gonna take that one? Mr. Seig, do you wanna grab that?
Sure, I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'll toss it back over to Commissioner Turner.
As, as we're having this discussion, could we bring out the fact for the publisher of the newspaper that sent me an email the other day that basically was asking us when we were gonna take public comment for them and let the world know that this is the third meeting? We had one, how we were gonna kick it off, where we invited everybody. We had another workshop where we invited everybody, and the school board chair came and participated in the workshop with us. This is a third workshop that we're doing for the final tweaking of the deal, where everybody was invited and, and let know about it. You can't make a horse drink when you lead him to the trough. So we, this is our third meeting, and we're not gonna finalize this today. We may move it forward, but it's, I understand, we've still got to have, we've still got to have the legal descriptions of the areas, too, and that's what's being worked on at the moment in order to finish this up. So at the earliest, we're gonna have another public hearing on this, which would be in two, approximately two weeks, if, if they can get all the paperwork done. So I just, this thing hasn't been just rough-shotted through or whatever. We've called meetings and told everybody about it and asked people to come and invited anybody that wanted to come. So there's nothing trying to be hid or slid through here at all. So anyhow, I just wanted to bring that, everybody's attention.
If you see the new maps on your plan, this is what Commissioner Pickens had some concerns about, wanting to keep District 1 a little bit more wholer. The numbers came back within 116 people from that district. Mr. Pickens, do you have anything you wanna comment on about that?
Well, just that, what I was trying to get across is that, that with the boundary lines of Highway 17, that north of that would be coming to District 1, and then we would take back into District, excuse me, District 3. And then basically Hual Ridge, which was just kinda cut out of District 1, was in District 3, that we would put that back into District 1, and then come around by the river north of 309 and pick up those voting blocks. I guess is how we had to do that. And the result is that everything north of 17 and then 309 would be in District 3, going across the Dunn's Creek Bridge, and then south, everything would be District 1, and taking back in Hual Ridge. And you look, the numbers got a little bit closer than they were the other day at the last map that we had, which I believe is what we're trying to accomplish.
I think it's a great job on that, so I appreciate that. Any other comments? I know, Charles, you've seen the map. Do you have any comments you'd like to make? Mr. Overton?
I have one.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Adams, that way he's on his way out.
Yeah. I like the map overall, but I think there's still some, on the edges of 5 and 2, there's I, I like the map overall, but I think there's still some, on the edges of five and two, there's some things I think we can clean up the lines on, like that yellow block that stands out there, that there really, I don't think there was a lot of people in that block. I think we did click on it at one point, and then maybe it got unclicked or something. And then there's some little pieces as you come across there, that north-south line, that I think if we added, I think it did add a few more people, and then maybe give some of that back to, to two on the other edge, if that makes the numbers kind of funky.
Talking about that block right there.
Yeah, and then there's a couple little tiny ones that you can't see in the small map, but on the big map, they stand out. Where just little, little, little dots that are yellow south of that, the line.
Oh, yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
I think that part of the problem here, and I learned this from dealing with them when they were here, is if that little chunk is part of a census block that's above it or outside of it, then in order to take it, that it actually goes up into the deeper into District Two. So it's not necessary that you can just take
Right.
the little block out. It may be part of a different census block.
I think we had them taken out when we were doing it, and I think-
Tried to take that one out. You and I did that day, and they couldn't because it was part of the system.
Yeah, that's, that was over here. I'm talking about this one.
I understand, but I think it's part of the system.
There's a little triangle here.
I think that block went out into here.
Okay.
And that's the reason why they couldn't take that particular block out
Okay.
was because that census block actually runs into, to the east, further than just the, the line.
I'm just trying to steal some of your district, that's all.
Take, take pardon back.
All right, I think we're good on that. Charles, do you see any issues with any of that? I'm sorry, Mr. Overturf, I shouldn't have called you Charles.
Just, just a couple of things in light of Commissioner Turner's comments. The only comment I would hear, and I've had a couple of people call, is there a way that the maps on the website can be enlarged, including putting the, the names of the streets on it? Because people are saying they cannot determine, and it's just like looking at this. I can't tell whether, you know, which street your district ends and his begins, or vice versa. So that would be, my thing would be to see if there's some way that you can, you know, increase it so that that way-
The IT shaking their head, yes, so.
And, and considering that changes were made just in the last couple of days, I think that's the comments that they're making, is they didn't have any, any opportunity to have any say-so about the first couple of meetings, just because we weren't to that-
They could have showed up for every meeting, Mr. Overturf. That's the part that irks me a little about the newspaper trying to make out like we're not being transparent here. We're trying to be totally transparent.
The state's going to have meetings, so just, you know, okay, so I'm, you know, just making that comment, and the paper's aware of it. My comment to you would be, I would rather you not do anything this afternoon. I think out of respect to the school board, they need to have a say-so, and in fact, they can draw their own districts. I don't want that. I want it to be where your district is the same as your counterpart in the school board. So I think that that's important, is the commissioner or the chairman, you know, make a, a presentation and let them have a say-so. I have a feeling they will be glad to rubber stamp it, you know, that they'll agree. You all have done a great job and that kind of thing. But to me, it's just respectful, you know, giving them-
Charles, that's my next comment, so if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. All right, and then the other-
I want to ask you about this, is the school board is meeting on ten nineteen at three thirty in the afternoon. With your permission, I'd like to take these maps, once we, if this is a map we're going to settle on today. And I believe, Mr. Overturf, you said you would go with me.
Be glad to, yes.
We could go together and go down there and make that presentation to the school board, and then we'd still have time to come back at the end of the month.
You want a motion or consensus?
Well, it, as long as y'all give me permission to do it, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I wouldn't step out my authority and do it on my-
And I think that's a really great idea, because then they can vote, and then you all can finalize it, and then we're, we're done. So my other suggestion to you is, I did check into the comments, because two or three of you had asked about us switching the numbers. I called the state. The state says they have no problem with it. They said the only one I needed to check with would be our county attorney, if he has any question. I will give you an example. This was done where we just switched district numbers, and it was done the last census in two thousand and eleven. It was in the school board districts, and Chairman Harvey, you're four now, but back then, that was five.
Okay.
And so they flip-flopped those two. Nobody has to run, nobody has to change anything, and that was the way it was then. And it would be the same now, if you all decided it, then of course, Mr. Buckles and Ms. Gilyard would switch, and Mr. Turner and Mr. Rawls would switch the numbers, and it keeps it better on your maps.
They all ordinance calls for you, for two, two and four running the same year, one, three and five running the same year. That's what our ordinance says, correct? So, because I'm getting conflicting information from different people than what you're getting your information from.
Okay.
So it says that, the ordinance says that the two and four runs in one year, and one, three and five runs in one year. So if you switch three with two, for whatever reason, then how can it be that three doesn't have to run again? And I'm understa- and I'm understanding, also on top of that, I'm understanding that the, that not only having to run again, but also he, he may not have to run again next year, because our ordinance says he doesn't have to run until, if he's in District Three, until three years from now.
Okay, the only thing I can tell you is, because you were elected last year, nobody can touch your terms, so you're there for the four-year term. If we just flip-flop the numbers, like I said, they did it in eleven, and there was no problem with it. They switched the two, went from four to five and five to four, in this, you'd be looking at three to two and two to three.
If our ordinance says, excuse me if you don't mind, we could change our ordinance if that-
Exactly, right.
Or not. We don't have to change-
That's why we're trying to go through all these hoops, because it doesn't say one, two, three, four, instead of one, three-
It's fine. It can stay the way it is.
Why would we go through all that effort?
I agree. At first, it sounded like an easy cleanup, but it's not-
I'm still trying to figure out why we even must be redistricting with the little bit that we had.
Mr. Adams, are you, are you done, Mr. Turner? Mr. Adams, that?
To this, do we have the software somewhere locally?
I'm not aware of it, no.
That's why we paid them all the money.
Great. I'd like to be able to click on a couple of those and move it around a little bit, just because it cleans it up a little bit, but, because I don't remember it being that way. I think we just went too far to the right, and I took on too many people was the issue. I don't think it was that that was connected. I think that was more down here, where we were working between one and three. But, I mean, I don't really care. We run countywide. It's kind of not overly relevant to anything, but.
Just to answer your question, at some point, the software will have to be here, because we have to use it for precinct purposes.
Right, that's why I thought you guys purchased it. I thought we-
Well, you all did.
Yeah, I think we purchased the software.
Oh, we rented it. We just hired the council.
Yeah, but it won't get here. Right now, this process is being done by them down in Tampa.
Right, but at some point, there will be-
Once we finalize our maps, it'll come back to you to-
Right.
But we have to finalize our maps.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rawls has a comment, then I'll go to you, sir.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
The only thing I'd like to say at this point is, is to make sure that we, out of an abundance of caution, and everybody's got to see it, that we do exactly what Char, uh, Mr. Overturf said, that we make sure that it gets on the, the map with roads, as many identifying features as we can, and put, and repost it on to the website. And, and that you take it to the school board one last time, even though the chair was here when we pretty much did it. Take it to them for approval, official approval, where nobody can say that we tried to just run through this.
So we're all in agreement that we're going to go with the revision-
Take the map as presented today. I, I move that we take the map as presented today and move it forward.
Thank you. Proper motion by Commissioner Turner? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Mr. Rawls, do you have a comment on the motion?
I thought we weren't going to, I thought we were going to hold off until the school-
We're just moving it forward.
Moving it forward in the process.
That's all.
Which means he takes, do what?
Does that require a motion, or?
Well, it's cleaner.
Move it forward in the process. That's what I said.
It just cleans it up a little bit.
It's not, this is not a vote.
No, it's not a final vote.
What it does is it, no, this moves it forward in the process. It allows him to go to the school board and present it as the map that we voted on. Two more weeks, hopefully we'll have our legal descriptions done in two weeks, and we can vote on it for real after the school board has seen it and looked at it and approved it. And I don't know who else, and then-
Well, we want to then have a meeting with the public and let them see the big maps and come in and interact, or no?
That's what we can do, yeah.
Okay.
That'll be part of that meeting.
That would be the nineteenth meeting?
Charles looks confused. Is that, is that not appropriate?
Not the nineteenth. The nineteenth is a school board meeting.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if you're going to do it like-
And we'll take public input by putting it on our website, so with the street identifiers on it. We've already got shaking of heads going on. That's where we can take some public input. We'll come back at the end of the month, and we'll have our legal descriptions, and if anybody has anything.
And what I might suggest, and I'm not dissident to them, but I'm sure they'll do it, is maybe divide it up into the districts instead of putting the big map, because you're not going to be able to, to be, make it that large for the people. But if you do it Terry's district, then everybody will know exactly where his is and where Paul's is, you know, that kind of thing. So that way, it gives them more information to look at.
But for clarification, we're, we're not planning on having a meeting with, with the public here, and that, after the school district?
Well, you want to have a, yeah.
There will be a public meeting, because it has to come back in front of the Board of County Commissioners for a resolution for adoption.
I mean, I mean, a meeting specifically for this. It sounds to me like, based on what you're saying, and basically, you said, and I, I got the same email, it sounds to me like there, there is people wanting to come in here and engage us in the process, so.
Or are they? They can come. They can make comments online. They can come. We got plenty of-
And they will have plenty of time, and I understand Commissioner Rawls is concerned, but if we, if we advertise this properly, and we get the school board meeting, it's going to be advertised as well, that they're going to be looking at it there. Once we get the information back that the Board of County Commissioners directs us to go ahead and get the resolution with the legal descriptions for the new sys, for the new districts, I think at that time, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment during the meeting itself, prior to any adoption of any, any redistricting maps, to be able to have that conversation at that time.
All right, so we have a proper motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Overturf. Appreciate your comments on that. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner request. This is going to come from me. I've asked IT, Sarah, Joel, and y'all come up. Broadband. As you know, I am the chairman of the Presidential Select Committee on Broadband for the state. I will be in Tallahassee tomorrow pitching broadband to Senate President and House Speaker, and letting them know where we're at in the process. But our, every county under the Access sixty-seven program through the Florida Association of Counties is asked, not mandated, to do certain things. And so I've kind of asked our IT department to look at this, and I've stepped away from it, because I didn't want to tank the picture. But I do want to have a conversation about broadband today and the local technology teams and the mapping plan. Because we do have, we do have some things that we are, I don't want to say mandated, but required by DEO to have done. The local technology planning team has to be done by next year or something like that. But I'll turn it over to you, so.
All right.
Okay.
All right, it's a joy, and thank you for, for letting me stand here today. We had a proposal from Magellan Advisors, they're, to do a broadband feasibility study for Putnam County. They, after looking, I've kind of just made some notes and, and kind of what they're looking at doing. They've worked with many counties and cities in the state of Florida. Recently, it's, it's Cambya County, I think is how you say it. Their objective with this project is to determine the low cost and effective way for Putnam County to improve the local broadband environment for the benefit of its communities and citizens that are in rural and underserved, or underserviced area, or no service at all in those areas. They'll provide us with a range of options to improve on that, through the broadband environment base in the, as, in the infrastructure, you know, and their assets. And they'll, basically what they'll do is they'll, they'll assess our current network as, and infrastructure that we have as far as cell towers and fiber loops within the, within the county, the cities, you know, going out down the major highways and all. They'll do that. They're going to, the scope of work's really done in about seven tasks. First would be the project kickoff, the second being current assessment and the market demand. The evaluate, the task three will be to evaluate the county's current broadband and their network capabilities. They'll do a gap analysis. After that, on the task four, task five, is they'll actually submit a network design of how we're going to get there. They, whether it be through fiber, laying fiber, whatever, or wireless communications on, off the satellites. So that's in their network design. Fiber to the home is another one that they're, that they'll look at and assess as well. Task six, the cost summary and the details, of course, and task, well, there's actually nine tasks, I'm sorry. Task seven, financials and funding sources. They'll actually go and tap and see where we can get financing and, or excuse me, financials and funding sources, I should say, for the project. And they have, they work very closely with FCC and all of that as well. And then the task eight would be the regulatory review, and then task nine, of course, the recommendation and the broadband roadmap. They will also provide us with mapping services of these areas as well, GIS map, outlining the areas in our county that are, that are underserved or are not served at all, with the map of the infrastructure we've got and things of that nature as well. That's kind of what their proposal was for that.
And let me kind of touch on, we, we know DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity, Office of Broadband, has a grant to do estate mapping, but they're not going to drill down into local communities. So if we're going to be trying to pitch our, our community as we need money for broadband when money comes available, this is actually the first step in producing a document with that. And I liked your number nine, too. It was also a recommendation, is what I heard you say.
Right.
That they're going to come in and say, because I know Commissioner Rawls, if I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you, you've used public, public-private partnerships before. They will let us know what's feasible, what's not feasible, so we don't go back down that road of the, the prior broadband situation we had in this county.
Right.
So I'm just going to leave it like that. I, I've tried to stay out of the weeds, because I didn't want to be in there with you. I appreciate you diving in and studying this, and
Yes, sir.
thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Rawls?
So just to follow up with that, and I discussed this, you know, briefly with the regional council. It, it makes sense when you look at other areas that, that have their own utilities, and they're providing data access. It's, it's, it's a fundraiser, but it's also a service that we can provide. I think it's a utility that's going to be necessary going forward, and it become more and more necessary as we become more digitally connected and working from home, and, you know, all, all the solutions that we've dealt with over the past three hundred and sixty-five days have, I think, brought out the fact that we do need to have broadband, or more, more access to broadband. But I'm, I'm just wondering if there's not a way that we can, while you're doing this study, take a look at the possibility or the feasibility of us having a, something along the lines of what Gainesville has with the GRU, when they sell, or City of Arto, or any of these other municipalities that, that are able to run their own utility and, and sell broadband?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. If I remember right, the proposal that I received, that, that is actually something that they'll, they'll go and assess as well. As far as the county infrastructure goes, and things of that nature, our network and, and this network infrastructure. That's something they'll, they'll assess as well, but I will make sure we take a, a look into that for sure.
Well, it's, you know, you, you go to a place like the Yucatan Peninsula, and you'll see markers that are, that are cautioning you, because they have buried, buried fiber optic.
Right.
They call it laser, but, and then you don't feel sorry for third-world countries anymore, because you realize that their technology is far advanced, more advanced than ours. So we have an opportunity to be able to put stuff in place that some of your bigger municipalities don't have, and they may not have for decades down the road.
Right.
But I think that there's, there's an opportunity here for us to be able to get in that business. I don't see any opportunity for any private company to come in and go out in some of these really rural areas and make any money. They'll lose money. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure their, their business model includes losses, but I don't know how much of an appetite they have when you've got, you know, a third of the state of Florida is rural as we are. We'll be fighting over that. So I think this is an opportunity for us as a commission to take a look at the possibility of having that as, as an additional utility and as part of the infrastructure that we're building, look at us building it and not being heavily dependent on lower satellites or somebody else providing or not providing, you know. It, it pains me when I hear people getting connected to ADSL. It's like, you know,
Yes, sir.
the nineties called.
Right.
You know, Mr. Rawls, before I turn it over to Mr. Adams, that this conversation is a whole lot different today than it was three months ago, and a lot different than it was two years ago when this started. And to your point, I do, I have been in talks with companies that you'd be surprised that are now going, I want to be in that business. And we already have the assets out there. So I think the, the money is drawing them to the table. And I think the, the idea of them being what they used to be, or what they can be, to the citizens is, is changing their philosophy quite differently. Surely they need help, don't get me wrong, but they don't need as much help as I think they started the conversation with months ago. I'll tell you that, so.
Well, what I'm talking about is when you have someone that's got a driveway that's six hundred feet long, it, it's, it's going to be- It's it's going to be painful for them, you know, they may have to add a node. They're not going to want to do that for pickup on customer, so.
Be surprised what they're willing to do right now.
And a lot of a lot of people are complaining about the satellite technology. And, you know, it's, I'm old enough to remember what it's like when you're downloading something and you lose connection. Or or there's one packet of information that didn't come through and you got to go through the whole thing over again. So, you know, hopefully you get those days put behind us, but I think this is an opportunity for us to take a look at having a utility. I don't know if it's something we need to discuss when we're convened as the as a port authority. I still have not gotten the answer to the question yet, Rich. Are we allowed to have a utility authority as a port authority? All right, so, you know, that's that's not something the county can do right now under our current governance type, but I think it's something we could work towards.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. We're going to, I'm going to get back to Mr. Ritchie on it, he's going to mention that to you. Mr. Adamsa?
Maybe let do that first.
Okay, go ahead. What's the ask today? We've got to do a mapping plan, number one, that's our big ask.
Yeah, you've been selling for a half an hour now, try to tell us what you're selling.
The Magellan Advisors, they they are, they're selling a an assessment for current infrastructure within our county, doing an assessment of that. And mapping out the underserved and non-served areas.
How much is that going to cost?
The quote that we got was between eighty and ninety thousand dollars from Magellan.
But we need to know what we don't know, don't we? And we can use ARPA funds for that.
How long do they think it would take to do the assessment?
They, there was a timeline and I believe it was four to five months for the assessment. And that'd be a bi-weekly meeting, I believe, through all of that, is what they told us.
All right.
I'm ready now. Is my turn?
Yes, sir, I thought I did call on you.
So, so the concern with anything with technology, right? My concern about having a utility around internet is government speed does not keep up with technology. So, I mean, if we were talking about maybe water, which we do, or electric maybe. Internet, I I think we need to stay as far away from it as possible. There's a reason why private companies don't serve the areas that are underserved because it's not beneficial to them financially. So government's role in this, I guess, under this new federal regime is to throw money at it. But I really don't think it's government's place to do, but if it's there, we need to use it. So I'm all for doing it because it's there. My only concern really is the four to five months, I mean, a lot of technology can change in four to five months. Exactly what you said, in three months, it's changed dramatically. Four to five months, the assessment could be done, all of a sudden in that four to five months, we know that SpaceX is going to come online. We don't know how many people are signing up for that. There's huge changes that we know are going to happen between now and the next six months. That it it puts me out of it for for that reason alone, probably. I I agree, we need to map it in some way, but, I mean, we kind of know the map. You go where there is dirt roads and you get a hundred yards off, that's the map. Logic dictates some of this.
Some of it does, but if we're going to, yeah.
We're not going to be able to go get every house in the county, it just isn't going to happen.
Mr. Turner?
Well, I was going to pretty much say what he just said, with the exception, maybe in my blunt Sam Matia manner. I I got a lot of heartburn paying ninety thousand dollars to draw a map that may be invalid and by the time the map's ready because of the technology that's happening so fast. I understand people don't like satellite internet at the moment, but there's nothing to say they won't like it in six months. I mean, really, five years ago, they'd say satellite internet, what? What did you just say? And now they're actually putting it in place. It's probably not as faster, as good right now as 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 fiber optic or whatever, but or cable or what have you, but it's it's coming. You know, so we're right at that juncture right now that if we throw money into just mapping and how we're going to do it and where it is and and those sort, especially ninety thousand dollars. If it was nine, that'd be different, but ninety, a lot can be done in this county with ninety thousand dollars. So I I have a hard time doing this at this juncture. When the whole technology of internet reception is probably going to change within the next year. I think with this, because of all the satellites and the stuff and the private money and the, that's where the rural internet's going to come from. Will it be as fast as fiber optic? Probably not, but it's a lot better than using a hotspot.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I don't know, I'm having, I'm having trouble getting there.
Mr. Chairman, let me, would you mind if I comment real quick?
Do not, go right ahead.
Absolutely understand where this conversation is going and the direction is going, so if it would be the will of the commission and certainly you as the chair. And also the chair of the broadband committee for the Florida Association of Counties. If it would be beneficial, I would like to be able to put a an IT committee together with with James and a couple of other folks and working through you, Mr. Chair. To see what other opportunities might be out there for funding of this and see if there's any other organizations out there that we might be able to look at the mapping for this. And not let this issue just kind of go away with you being the chair of the broadband committee. I wouldn't mind doing that for you if it's if if that would assist.
No, I I appreciate that, but it's not about, it's not much about me being the chair. It's, I think it's what we need to know what we don't know. And I think that's where we're going to come down to it. And, yeah, that's a hefty price tag and I was not prepared for that. But I do think that that even even if we get down four months, they can clean up the last month because we'll know where we're at. But I do think that if we're going to look at more funding coming down the path, we got to have a document that says this is where we need funding. And we can say, yeah, it's a hundred feet down that dirt road, but that doesn't really tell the federal government anything. We need to find a product that tells our story. And our story is, we've got a lot of people that have, I think, I'll say this before I turn over to Mr. Rawls. Everyone in the county has internet, I believe that. I believe they have access to internet. Is it reliable, affordable and accessible? Those are the three things. And for me, the cost I pay, it might be half if I lived in Orlando. I mean, it just, and I might get more service. I don't know that answer, but I don't think we know what we don't know right now. And what we don't know is what are all the assets we currently have in the county? I don't think this, I know it's a hefty price tag and it shocked me too, because I told you I didn't want to know.
Right.
Stayed out of it. But it is something that I think one day we're going to have to prove that this is where our underserved or not served people are at and this is the help we need. And unless we have that document, I don't think we're going to see funding coming down to help us. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that what I'm what I'm describing is a public, private partnership, not just us going in the business. I think, you know, there's really no way that we're not going to be able to get around providing the service to all of our citizens one way or another because we have a lot of students. Virtual learning environment is really growing to be very popular. And we're we're looking right now at a lot of, a lot of development coming to Putnam County. People that are moving in here are going to need access to that as well. So we're a connected community, we're a connected state, a connected nation and a connected world by virtue of the internet. And I think that it's something that we should be looking into, you know, looking for, looking for those opportunities with the private company maybe. You know, we don't have any control, it irks me that we don't collect money from FPNL and Clay County on franchise fees, you know, for electricity. But, you know, in the in the future, I, you know, I hope that this commission would take advantage of the fact that there there probably is someone out there that'd be willing to come along for the ride with us. And like you said, they're going to require a little bit of funding and we're just going to have to figure a way to make the money available. But I think there's there's a way to recoup that money and that would be by having, you know, triple P or something to that effect.
Thank you. Mr. Adamsa?
I'm not against any of a public, private partnership, but I think that partnership starts with the assessment. So I think maybe we need to look for a player that'd be willing to share the cost of an assessment and then move forward from there. Maybe that's potentially, I don't know that there are players out there, to be honest with you. Speed is 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 not, speed doesn't mean everything, right? Because there's there's, I have satellite at my house and I have Windstream. My Windstream is one tenth as fast as my satellite. But my Windstream, I can do my VPN on because it doesn't have to do six round trips of communication to basically log into security protocols. The Windstream is great for streaming my kids' stuff, but I'm paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month between the two. That's insane. So in Orlando, I definitely could go for forty-nine ninety-nine and get a hundred megabit direct line into my house, that that can happen. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner Harvey. So we just, we got to watch it when we talk about speed. I mean, there there's distinct differences between what the technology is and what the speed means. That speed isn't always usable, if that makes sense. So public, private partnership is great, I don't think we have the private partners here, but how do we, we'd have to ask, how would we put that out that we're looking for that?
What, we do have AT&amp;T and Comcast right now here.
That are saying, hey, let's partner with you guys.
They're in the county now.
Sure, and we have Windstream and they're satellite providers and.
So at what point can we not go to those and say, you're here in our county, already providing services, we want to, we want to work with you, we want to expand this? And bring them to the table since they're already here utilizing our right of ways anyways.
I I think that's a great idea to go to them, but.
And they are, they are coming, but the problem is, is that, well, they want money to run, their solution right now is fiber.
I'm telling us for as fun as the.
I get it, I get it. Mr. Ritchie, I have a question for you. Is there any way to go back to this company that you're you're talking about and going, boy, the board almost had a heart attack over the price tag? You know, could we go down a little lower? Could, what could we get for fifty thousand or what could we get for forty thousand? I don't know the answer, but I'm just asking you that.
Yes, sir, we do have a contact and I can reach out to her and see what we can, what they can do for us, what kind of packages maybe they provide or what level of service and whatnot.
Mr. Adamsa, you have the floor?
I actually wasn't shell shocked by the price.
Oh, really?
I I don't want to pay the price. For an IT project to this scope, eighty to ninety K is actually fairly reasonable, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's only.
I mean, I manage these type of projects for a living, that's what I do. And eighty, ninety K for a four-month project across, you know, this geography that we have and assessing things that, collecting the data, that's, it's not unreasonable. To be honest with you, but.
I appreciate.
I mean, we do three-week-long projects that are eighty to ninety K every three weeks.
Okay. I didn't know, I don't.
It didn't surprise me in that manner, just I don't want to take that bite of the apple.
Mr. Turner?
I think we're going about that wrong. I think what we need to do is, I've been working on internet ever since I've been here and we've had several meetings, but it's been a couple of years. One of those meeting rooms was filled up with the ATP and the Verizon people and what have you, and they basically told us, when it's time, we'll do it. When it makes sense, we'll do it. Well, now that we have some money that we make and help them or we make and tell them, look, if you need towers to hook on to, we could take our communications towers and let you hook your equipment on our towers. That'd keep you from spending all that money. Make it more affordable, maybe that if we're going to take some kind of a, I don't know what kind of funding it would be, ARPA or future infrastructure or whatever and put it down this path, that's fine. I think that we'd do a lot more giving it to somebody who actually has the ability to go up there and make it where you can turn the switch and turn it on. Than it would be for us to come up with a map of where they don't have it right now. I don't, unless they ask for that. If they ask, if we have that map, we could make this work. I'd be first on board to vote for it. But until we have that meeting, I think we could, we could set that meeting up. Either you as chairman or or the commission or whatever, see if we could get Verizon and AT&amp;T and and the players in the room to show up. The Windstreams, the different ones, have them all show up in a room, say, we'd like to talk internet. Now, tell us the hard, cold facts instead of what we're dreaming up at the diocese. Because I think they're two different worlds that we're looking at. So I think that's the next step before we spend ninety thousand dollars or any portion of that, we need to find out if that really matters or not, you know, having that map. Or would AT&amp;Ts come in and say, okay, or Verizon or whoever come in and say, okay, for ninety thousand dollars and you let us use all your towers, we'll put internet in this whole area over here and turn it on wireless. We've just done something. I I mean, other than just pay to have another study that we don't even know for sure if that's the study we need.
Commissioner Turner, I don't disagree, I just want to say that I think you're going to find these these providers are going to try to steer it in their direction in the conversation.
Five of them in the room.
Yeah, I get that, but also know that in some counties, they went down certain paths in which they'd went down another. I'm just saying, I I think we don't, we we need to know what we don't know, that's all. Mr. Adamsa?
Yeah, I I'm kind of with Mr. Turner a bit. I think you'll find that the providers kind of know the information.
They do.
Whether or not you get them to share the information is is the problem. Because that that is proprietary, they went through this this, some sort of analysis to decide where to run the lines. And they know where they don't want to run the lines for a reason or or put up towers or or whatnot. But with the incentive of of money and then seeing competition in a room, I think that, I think that has benefit. And maybe they don't loosen up completely and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to give you all our information. But maybe they do say, hey, we see a spot here, Windstream out in West Putnam and then AT&amp;T, well, I see a spot that goes from that edge of West Putnam to interlock. Because that's where their divide is, their divide is at Keyucar Road. I mean, I I know that, everyone knows that, if you look at their different maps of availability, which are available online. And then you look at where the towers are, you know, and maybe Verizon says, well, if we put a tower between Orange Springs, and I'm just talking about Meyer because that's what I'm most familiar with. And then they can catch Star Lake and that, that's, I think there's benefit to that, to them be aware of what each other has on a high level. And then maybe they can fill some gaps without us really doing much of anything outside of saying that maybe we put this ninety thousand dollars towards helping them fill those gaps. To actually putting the money, the rubber where the road is, instead of doing some assessment. Because that data is had, they have it. Guarantee you.
Mr. Rawls?
Talk about 5G. Because I I got a new phone a couple of weeks ago and I got 5G.
5G, what I know about 5G is it's short range, unlike, you know, LTE, 4G LTE. It's short range and it's, I don't want to, you know, give an off-the-wall ratio, but there's many more towers, be able to cover an area with 5G because of the fact that it is more of a short-range band. Whereas 4G is not that way.
So 5G is becoming more and more prevalent, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a point in time, because I I was shocked when I saw 5G pop up in Putnam County, I thought we would be the last ones to see it. So it it, would that not be pertinent to the conversation?
The there, the assessment obviously would, you know, they would look into that type of technology as well. I mean, I'd be honest with you, I couldn't tell you what towers had it or anything like that, but it is a certainly a wireless solution that would be considered in a in internet for the county or broadband for the county.
Because it it's incredibly fast, even even when you're using it as a hotspot.
Yes, sir.
Which I had to do down in Orlando, because they had very slow internet. The bad thing about metropolitan areas like that is a lot of users. So you get slowdowns.
Sure.
But 5G was blazingly fast.
Right.
Compared to what they had at the resort.
All right, well, I think Commissioner Turner probably said it best that maybe if we can, and it's going to take county resources to do this, Mr. Suggs. But to sit down and see if the providers will come, sit in the room and have that conversation and openly have it where we can know. If we can make our case to somebody that this is our non-served or underserved communities out there. But I'm hopeful that they'll share all that information. I think that they're they're looking for the dollar, they're looking to run fiber, they've already told me, we'll run fiber all day long. Partner with us, give us ten million dollars and we'll, we don't have ten million dollars. So that's, I mean, I'm just making that number up, don't quote me, Sarah. Okay, so I was just, but I'm just saying, that's what their solution right now is running fiber, which I think it's going to be, I think the solution to broadband is going to be a smorgasbord attempt for rural counties.
Absolutely.
And I think it's going to be fiber, I think it's going to be microwave, I think it's going to be satellite, low-order satellite, I think it's going to be 5G and LTE, I think it's going to be a multitude of that.
Yes, sir.
But again, and and if we wanted to be in that business or not in that business, or how do we, how do we encourage this util, this people to do this? How do we do these things? And I think that's what we need to talk about one day. So it is going to be, I mean, it's going to be a drain on county resources right now to put that meeting together. But if the board allows, I'll get with Mr. Suggs and we'll. But if the board allows, I'll get with Mr. Suggs, and we'll start working in that direction.
I think that's the next step.
Okay. Good deal. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
As Mr. Commander, looking to see if we, if there's a possibility for us to engage in franchise agreements with these folks, because that is one way we can leverage our ability to help the citizens, and they do it in other counties. So, if there's a possibility that we are allowed to have franchise agreements, then maybe we can bring them to the table and not have to have them tell us what they're going to do, but then be able to sit down as a mutual partner with them and say, "What can, what, you know, we allow you to work within our county. You know, we have these providers come, just like the folks that say, 'Don't poop on Putnam County.'" We allow them to work and sell their wares within our county. Surely, there's got to be some way that we have leverage over what they do, how they do it, and, you know, be able to move this thing along.
Mr. Suggs, in the meantime, though, we do have a, we have a suggest, well, the statute says a deadline date to put the local technology teams together. Maybe that would be the IT team that could work together on bringing those people in. And we can, you know, we're a very small rural area. We can sit here in five minutes and name most of them that would be in that room. So, you know, is that okay?
Yes, sir. We'll look at it and make sure we buy whatever we have to.
Board on board? Where the direction we're going?
Board on board.
Board on board? Good deal.
Oh, good.
Next item, Commissioner Rawls, Florida statutes for discussion on sale of fireworks.
So, I had a constituent that reached out to me, and he raised a question, and it was, why is it that he cannot get a license to operate in Putnam County to sell fireworks? And after talking with Chief Grimes and Clue Wright, basically, the way our system is set up, if somebody comes in in January and buys a fireworks permit, and I can come up and correct me if I'm speaking at a turn here, but they tie up the county at that point. So, you have a vendor from, I believe, North or South Carolina that comes down here, buys the permit, and then no, even people that reside and work inside of our county at that point cannot set up fireworks stand to sell fireworks. And it just didn't seem like there was any equity there at all.
They were having to buy that permit from the city of Platteker, the town of Interlaken, because we don't have any to give.
Yeah, the county has none to give because we didn't have some back in 2000.
Yeah, what's up with that, too?
Actually, I got this from the commander. Correct anything wrong. This is Attorney General's opinion.
You gave me one.
I gave you one. Back in 2016, if you go down to the very bottom, I kind of highlighted it. I don't mind that last, on the first page, in the very bottom of the second-to-last article, what it reads there. But there again, that's five years old. Mr. Commander had some other things maybe he'd want to mention here, but...
Well, maybe I can just give a brief overview. That'll help. So, in 2007, the legislature put together a task force that was going to review the sale of fireworks on a safety basis. That task force was going to provide a report to the legislature, which they did in 2008, recommending an overhaul. While the task force was meeting, the legislature put into place a moratorium that prohibited anyone, any local government, whether city, town, county, from allowing any new permanent fireworks sale establishment, and also if any of those local...
You said permanent?
Correct. If any of those local governments had had the ability to issue permits prior to 2007 for a temporary basis, for example, if the county had issued 10 permits the year before, they could only issue 10 permits going forward. The legislature in 2008 never took action on that report, never revamped the fireworks code as it looks in 791, and because of that, the moratorium still exists in place today. So, local governments are not allowed to, one, allow any new permanent establishment, and, two, can only allow whatever they would have permitted back before 2007.
So, it seems, I thought he, he said that there was permits issued prior to 2007 in the past, but we...
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have a record of any of them. So, I mean, if we don't have record of a permit being issued, the only ones we have record of is the one in the town of Interlaken and the two that are inside the city limits of Platteker. That's all record we have.
Okay. So, and there's nothing we can do under home rule?
If there's a moratorium, statewide moratorium in place.
Has this been looked into? Has anybody at the state level brought this up?
Well, what Chief Grimes gave you was the request for a legal opinion in 2016. There was another one by, in South Florida, by Sam Goran, a little bit after, I think it was 2009, all asking basically if the moratorium was still in place, and the answers are yes. So, yes, people have looked into it, and that's the current state of the law.
All right. Mr. Rawls, anything else?
I mean, I wonder if it wouldn't, you know, if it was a consensus of the board, if it wouldn't do us good to write a letter to the governor's office, request them to look into this. And, I mean, it...
In order to allow somebody to sell fireworks that can't now?
Yeah. So, what's happening is, is we basically just have that one license in Putnam County, and when this, I think it's called Phantom Fireworks, when they come, they come in and buy the license. No one else can sell in Putnam County, but they're an out-of-state vendor. And you got a local guy that would like to do it, and is being told he can't get licensed because somebody from out of state has already got everything wrapped up. And then they set their mobile fireworks sale places up.
Mr. Adams?
I have no problem with us putting something to the governor and saying, "We want to expand business opportunities," but it really is, at this point, it sounds like it's up to the people that want to have fireworks establishments throughout the state and this county to lobby the state themselves. I mean, that's what they need to do. And probably what they're getting resistance from is the overall fireworks lobby is the, owned by the bigger companies that don't want them to exist. So, it's a kind of a catch-22, but it's up to them to take some ground roots action.
Monopoly.
Kind of like, "Don't poop for Putnam has," and do that at the state level, because it sounds like we have no decision rights in this whatsoever, outside of, if we decide as a group to give our support that we think that fireworks rights should be expanded. I guess that's fireworks rights. Let's fight for fireworks rights. That would be the only thing I think we could do. I don't know if that's something we'd want to do as a group, but I'd be willing to sign off on it.
Maybe we just move on.
Yeah. All right, good. I think we've done that. Moving down to Commissioner comments. Mr. Rawls, I'll start with you.
Um, I think I'm good for now.
Pickens?
I'm good.
Mr. Adams?
I'm good.
Okay, I have two things. One is, the Melrose community has contacted me. They're going to have a second Christmas parade. There's going to be a nighttime Christmas parade, and then the merry-time Christmas parade that's in the daytime. They want us to support a letter to DOT allowing them to use the same route and have the parade. So, basically, by consensus, we just need to say they're allowed to have a parade, and we'll sign the letter giving them that authority. Next thing, Mr. Troxel, if you'll come up. Mr. Troxel and I, and quite a few people, have been working on a situation out in Mirror Lane and Mannville area, close to Interlaken. And basically, it's a piece of property. Well, Mr. Troxel, you probably could better explain it, and I'll try to stay out of it.
Okay. Everybody's familiar with Mirror Lake Lane? It's off of 20. You go up Northwest Street and you can take a left.
That's the cemetery.
By the cemetery. There's a gentleman that bought some property there that's adjacent to the lake, but he also owns 36 feet above a 30-foot swath of land that the county owns. We determined after many, many searches that his property is split by a 30-foot easement that we own, right-of-way that we own, going down, allowing the residents of Mirror Lake to get to their homes. We've been back and forth many times with several entities, and Mr. Clay Davis has been great helping us out getting the plat maps and everything else.
And Warren Willhite, too, yes.
For this. There's an easy solution, in my mind, to make this, to make the residents there whole so they can get to their houses without costing an absorbent amount of money on the county's side to do some other stuff. And that is to purchase that 36 feet that the gentleman owns, 300 foot long or whatever, so they can get to that. And it's about five grand. He's asking $5,000 to purchase that. That does several things. One is, that's where the current road, dirt road back to Mirror Lake Lane is. If we were to put the road on our 30-foot that we have the easement in, it is chock full of oak trees. It would cost way more than that to clear that out and build a road there.
Is this the one that the, that the existing road's under the power line?
The, they were using a prescriptive easement under there, but this...
But that's part of it, but that's not, that's not the...
All you need is straightening, because that is a mess. All you need is straighten that mess out. It's $5,000.
I went to Benell, met with them.
That's chairman. I move, we move this forward for the $5,000.
I'll second it for conversation.
Thank you. We have proper motion by Mr. Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
Can we flip-flop the property?
We tried that.
We looked at that, and one, it just, this will give us the true 66 feet of right-of-way in there. All we're doing is buying his 36 feet. We have 30. That would give us 66 feet.
What happens if we're 30 feet?
It's still ours.
That is such a mess out there. If you can fix it for five grand, that's the best thing this county ever did.
And let me say this. We're not going to get, at the corner of the fence, I negotiated that we have a turn. We bring that fence in, and we're going to gain more land so people can bring their stuff in, fire trucks can get in. They don't have to go up, stop, turn left. They can, so I think we, you're exactly right.
Are we creating a new road? Are we going to take this into public works?
No, we already have.
The road, the road is, we're not creating a road. The road is there. It's Mirror Lane.
But it's not ours. It's going to be ours if we buy it.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, are we, we're going to bring this into the public works?
It would, my guess is, if we do bring it in, it would be, it could still be a Class II road. But, yeah, we would, we would own that parcel of land.
But there's nothing needs to be done to it, so we're in good shape. Mr. Pickens?
I think most of the questions were answered. I guess we're using his property, they're using his property to access it now.
Correct.
And the property we own, where the road's supposed to be, is full of trees.
Correct.
That's not the only spot in Putnam County that we have.
No, this is not unique, but it is a...
And I just hope that...
The only one I've ever heard of we could fix for five grand.
Well, hope it doesn't rear its head again. So, anyway, that was my, my last question was, who's maintaining it? So, if it goes to a two...
Just wanted to go to Louie.
What? Right. I'm afraid we might be.
This is a mess.
All right. So, we have proper motion. We have proper second. Any further discussion?
All in favor, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Julianne will get, you'll get with Julianne. Okay, good deal. And county attorney comments? Mr. Suggs' comment?
Nothing additional, sir. Thank you.
Public comment on miscellaneous items? Any public want to speak? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.